Okay, call a meeting to order if you can please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome to the Tanna Riverhead Planning Board meeting. Today is Thursday, May 20th, 2021. We do have some people on the call in. If you could please mute your microphones until you need to speak, we would appreciate it. Thank you. First item on the agenda today is a discussion item for Peconic Farms for a major subdivision.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe we have Martin Finnegan is here representing the application. This is a continued discussion of a major subdivision application that was submitted. It was on last meeting, the last planning board meeting's agenda. Unfortunately, it was postponed until this meeting. The applicant did drop off amended plans to our office today about an hour and a half ago, so at this point I have not been able to do a review on it or write any kind of report. I don't know if Mr. Finnegan has anything he'd like to add, but you know, this is just, you know, we've just received new plans on this application.
Yeah, good afternoon. I think Doug Adams is there too and Tom Walbert. I think they're, we just wanted to, you know, confirm that the plans were received by the board. We're trying to keep us on track hopefully for yield map approval maybe at your next meeting. The plans that were submitted today, I understand, address the town engineer's concerns in his May 4th memo. So we're hoping that we can move forward to the next step here. If there are any other questions, I think Doug was available to address them. Doug, I don't know if you have anything you want to add at this point either?
No, except that we, I think we addressed everything that he was concerned about.
All right, if we could just, we've got physical copies. If you guys can just send over a digital copy of that plan so that I can send that over to our consulting engineer and we can get comments back from him on it.
Got it.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Greg, do you think this will be on the next, will be on the next meeting?
Well, I, you know, I'm not sure. We got to give them to our engineer and, you know, it is noted that you guys postponed this several times, so we were waiting for you the whole time. So for us to guarantee you that you're going to be on the next meeting, we can't do that right now.
No, I understand.
It's been noted several times that you postponed on us, so we'll get them to them if we have comments and we're ready to discuss it, we'll put you on, but it's too early as soon as.
We got the consulting engineers', you know, comments two weeks ago, so they've been addressing that minute we've been doing.
Okay, well, the ink isn't even dry on the ones we just got, so we'll, we'll, we'll try and get you on, but we can't guarantee it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item, Fink's Country Farm Trailer Stand.
All right, so this is a farm stand application which is seeking approval to locate an eight-foot by thirty-foot temporary trailer to be used for the sale of agricultural products, which are produced on a parcel which is currently engaged in agricultural production. The proposed application is a type-two action pursuant to SECRE as it consists of agricultural farm management practices, including construction, maintenance, and repair of farm buildings and structures, and land use consistent with the generally accepted principles of farming. The subject parcel on which the farm stand would be located is a 21.67 acre parcel of land, which is located on the northeast corner of Middle Country Road and Wading River Manor Road. Property is located within the RB-80 zoning use district and is also located within the Pine Barrens compatible growth area. Property has approximately 450 feet of frontage on Middle Country Road and approximately 2,900 feet of frontage along Wading River Manor Road. The site is presently cleared and is currently in agricultural production, and there are no structures currently present on the subject parcel. Subject site is unimproved with the exception of eight-foot tall deer fencing, which has been installed around the perimeter of the property. There is a, currently a U-shaped gravel driveway on the subject property along the east side of Wading River Manor Road, approximately 2,300 feet north of the intersection. It seems like this was constructed sometime between June 2018 and November 2018. Unfortunately, this U-shaped gravel driveway was constructed without the benefit of a permit from the town highway department. The plans have been referred to the highway department for their review and comments. The project was reviewed by the town's agricultural advisory committee. They reviewed the application at their meeting on May 10th. At that time, they recommended approval of the application with the stipulation that they need to meet with the highway superintendent about paving the entrance and egress to the stand. In terms of parking, while the plan does not show any delineated parking for the site, there are grass shoulder areas on either side of the U-shaped driveway. It seems like there'd be enough room to park at least five cars on either side of that based on the ten-foot by twenty-foot stall size. Again, this is just going to be a temporary trailer stand. There's no building, so I don't anticipate that it would be a high level of traffic volume, so that does appear to be acceptable. The property, like I said, is located within the Pine Barrens compatible growth area. They did receive a hardship waiver from the Pine Barrens Commission to clear the land and engage in agriculture. That hardship permit was granted by the Pine Barrens in June of 2017. As of the current date, all activities and clearing on the property do comply with those Pine Barrens hardship waiver requirements. Again, the plans were referred to the highway department superintendent. He had stated that he would like to see a paved asphalt apron at the ingress and egress just to ensure that there's no gravel or other sediment that gets tracked out into the town right of way. You know, not a, not a, not a heavy lift on this application, and we do recommend approval of it with the condition that they must obtain a permit for the driveway and abide by the conditions of that permit, that the approvals granted herein would be limited to the placement of an eight-foot by thirty-foot trailer bed, and that the construction of any other structures or future expansion would require additional approvals from the planning board.
All right, question. Trailer, are we talking steel? Are we talking wood?
I'm not a hundred percent sure. I did speak with the applicant. Unfortunately, they were kind of busy with their season right now. I don't know if they were able to make it. I mean, I can get details of that. Right now, it just says temporary trailer bed.
I'm wondering how they would use it. I have no, I, I, I really don't take any, I have no problem with it, but I don't know how they would use it. You know, if it's a, if it's a steel trailer, you'd have two doors. How do people get in and out, you know? Step, you know, safety, I'm just.
Based on the plans, I would think it would be just some, like a flat wood trailer bed where they're going to just put the goods there and it, you know.
Okay, so it would be open?
Yeah, I believe, yes, I believe so.
Good, good. If that's what you think it is.
Greg.
Yes.
So it says agricultural products produced on a parcel of land currently engaged in agricultural production. So everything they're going to sell in this farm stand is going to be grown on this parcel?
I don't know that. I mean, I know the parcel is engaged. They do own another farm stand, another farm operation down the road. I could get clarification on that from the applicant if you'd like.
Well, I mean. Well, that's what I'm, that's why I'm asking. I mean, some of these things are turning into selling combustible products to, to wood, to, you know, stuff you use around the house, so it's the only reason why I ask. If they grow it elsewhere, I mean, it's still agricultural, but what's the limit sometimes? That's just a question.
I pass there all the time, and I know they, they've got corn, they've got tomatoes, they've got peppers and cucumbers that they've grown. And they could sell probably.
Yeah, I mean, that's not.
I'm sure everything that the offer wouldn't be grown there.
Yeah, I mean, there, there are provisions in the town code. I believe it's a sixty-forty split. You know, sixty percent of the goods that are sold at that farm stand must be produced on-site. So there is a kind of level of protection in the town code that's afforded for the farm stands.
Right, but to what degree? Could they sell house cleaners? Can they sell propane? Can they sell? That's my question. I'm not talking about, you know, any kind of vegetable or flowers even, those kinds of things.
I mean, I, we can get clarification from the applicant. I mean, I would believe their intent would be to sell goods that are produced.
About clarification from the town code?
All right.
On those kind of products? Not questioning flowers or anything that's grown at all? My other question is, that parcel at the corner, the piece at the very corner of Wading River Manor Road and Middle Country Road, wasn't that recently cleared? Wasn't that wooded?
So yes, that was wooded. That is why they went to the Pine Barrens and they got that hardship waiver to allow the clearing. Pine Barrens said they wanted, I believe it was ten percent of, on the subject parcel, the eastern side of that, there is a vegetative buffer that they did not clear. I think that's, they gave some screening to the neighboring residential subdivision. But yes, that parcel was cleared. It was wooded, but they did get the hardship waivers from the Pine Barrens. They were, they applied for building permits to the town for the land clearing. They obtained those and they abided by all the conditions.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other questions?
Nope.
Okay, next item is Bating Hollow Vineyard.
All right, and here to represent the application, we have Sean Kelly. I don't know if we have anybody else in the room for it. It's just you.
It's just me.
All right. So the planning department has received a preliminary site plan application seeking approval to construct a 6,048-square-foot barn-style wine tasting pavilion with a cellar for wine making and processing, as well as to construct a 2,500-square-foot farm equipment barn to convert an existing wine processing building into a bathroom facility, as well as perform assorted lighting, landscaping, parking, drainage, and sanitary system improvements. Also, they will be removing certain existing structures as well as looking to legalize improvements which were installed without benefit of a permit or a site plan approval. Subject parcel is a 16.79 acre parcel of land located on the north side of Sound Avenue in Bating Hollow, approximately 800 feet east of the intersection of Sound Avenue and Edwards Avenue. Property is presently improved with a lawfully existing two-story frame building with the tasting room on the ground floor and a residential apartment on the second floor and an outdoor 1,000-square-foot brick patio. There are also a number of structures on-site which are proposed to be removed as part of this application, including a number of horse stalls and horse barns, sheds, and other agricultural structures. The easterly and northerly portions of the property are currently engaged in agricultural production with grapes, grapes being the principal crop. Right now, there's approximately 10 acres of the subject property which is dedicated to the agricultural production, and there's also a proposed .6-acre future vineyard expansion which is considered for the western portion of the property. Property is currently accessed via two curb cuts on Sound Avenue. There's a 25-foot-wide easterly curb cut and an 18.5-foot-wide westerly curb cut. Property is located in the RA-40 and RA-80 zoning district. It is a, considered a type-one action pursuant to SECRE as the site plan proposes more than 50 parking stalls. We do have a resolution here to classify the action and initiate a coordinated SECRE review among involved agencies. Speaking to the use of the property, in the RA-80 and RA-40 zoning use district, which permits agricultural production as a principally permitted use, as such, the accessory, the wine tasting would be considered accessory to the agricultural production that's happening on the property. And that is consistent with New York State Ag and Markets laws. They put out something in August of 2016. It was called the Guidance for Review of Local Laws Affecting Farm Operations Which Produce, Prepare, and Market Crops For Wine, Beer, Cider, and Distilled Spirits. Basically, with that, those guidelines state that the processing and marketing of on-site agricultural production goods, you know, turning grapes into wine, turning barley and hops into beer, and marketing on farm was consistent with the farm practices. So as such, it would be considered an accessory use to the agriculture. There was litigation. Now, the prior owner of this facility, there was a, there was a lawsuit started in 2010. Gave a brief history of it in the staff report. Basically, where that got us to this point is that there were stipulations, there were some settlements. Since then, Mr. Kelly has taken ownership of the property. But this lawsuit basically got us to a point where they can make a site plan application, which is what promulgated them making this application now. Some considerations that the planning board must note when reviewing the application is if the use of the tasting pavilion should be restricted, you know, just to be used for wine tasting versus like private events and catering facilities. More importantly, that the wine tasting use is accessory to the principal agricultural production that happens on the property. And if at any point the agricultural production on the property ceases, you know, if they stop farming, they would inherently use the accessory use because they wouldn't be producing anything on the farm. The board should also consider hours of operation and, you know, live and amplified music, which is consistent with other reviews that the planning board has done on these tasting rooms along Sound Avenue. As I said, there are two curb cuts in the property. There's a main 25-foot-wide easterly curb cut, which would serve as the main access to the parking lot area. And then there's a smaller eighteen-and-a-half-foot-wide curb cut which runs adjacent to the existing two-story tasting room. Right now, there's a sign on that smaller, that narrower curb cut that says "one-way." I'd just like to see some clarification onto how this area will be restricted to use just to ensure that people are entering and exiting at the proper locations. You know, that's something that the applicant can answer. The current site plan proposes 175 parking stalls. Now, I did speak with the applicant as they were working through this project. The total usage of the property only requires 64 parking stalls based on the uses and the amount of gathering space. However, it was a recommendation that they should provide as much parking as they possibly can. You know, actually, I looked at, on the Google Maps, when you go to a street view of this, you can see during the peak hours, you know, that the site does get congested. So they are proposing 175 parking stalls. The site plan on one of the sheets does indicate and demonstrate the ability for, to turn around a 45-foot-long bus on the northern portion of the parking lot. The applicant should provide details on how they plan to accommodate buses, if it'll be by reservation, or where the buses will go, if they will remain on-site. Right now, the only landscaping that's proposed on the application is to, along the frontage of the property, to screen a proposed RPZ device on the frontage near Sound Avenue. The application is also proposing new, sixteen new LED lighting fixtures around the parking area. All proposed fixtures comply with the 16-foot mounting height and the 3,000-degree Kelvin color temperature. And the plans do indicate that the light fixtures on the eastern side of that parking lot, which is adjacent to a residentially zoned piece of property which could be developed, the plans do indicate that they will put shielding on those residential sides to help any kind of light trespass that would be viewed from a neighboring residential property. The application will be referred to the ARB. It will be on their scheduled meeting at the end of this month. And referrals to the other agencies will be handled during the SECRE coordination process. Yes, sir. So at this point, we have a resolution to classify it as a type-one action and initiate that coordinated SECRE review, get that out to involved agencies, and if we have any, if the board has any questions, if the applicant would like anything to address.
Greg, for the bathrooms, are they going to add bathrooms in that new structure?
Yes, sir.
So do they need to install septic?
Yes, sir.
They're going to the health department, right?
Correct.
Okay. You mentioned about the outdoor music. I think in any potential resolution, we should be very clear and specific as to the limitations of outdoor music events and that it may require a special permit from the town board to hold these, these events. Just want to be consistent with all the other ones that came to us on Sound Avenue.
Yes. The board have any other questions?
Not at this point.
Yeah, if you have anything to say.
Sean, do you have anything you'd like to add or?
Um, yeah, I addressed the, the live amplification. We have been having enough problems with the installing of cables and everything. And I installed a sound system that I had completely before. And we do have live music. They don't bring their own amplifiers or anything or blast music however loud. They run through my system. I have a phone. I have my own decibel meter that I can walk around the facility and make sure that none of the sound is even leaving my property. So we're taking care of, taking care of that, and that'll go for me.
What, is, is that permitted without a special permit? Outdoor music? We've been through this.
I will, I will look through the town code. I don't know if it specifically calls out live music. I mean, I know there are, you know, decibel, decibel levels that they have to meet in terms of, I, I can get clarification from the board. I'll have to look through, I believe it's chapter 251, the noise ordinance, to see if live music is allowed or if, you know, they need to go through any additional steps. I can get an answer for the board on that.
There's one specific to Sound Avenue. Absolutely, so.
Oh, Mr. Kelly?
Yes?
I noticed there were a number of lawsuits over the years that have been filed against you. And have they all been settled or did you have to settle them or how does that, how does that work?
They were brought against these owners.
I'm sorry?
There was a stipulation settlement a few years back that basically said that as long as all the violations are cured with the subsequent site plan, that the lawsuit will be lifted.
So they're all settled? Is that it?
Well, it's a stipulation settlement pending the approval of this.
Right, so that's why they're here.
Okay.
But Joe, just to clarify, he kind of broke up in the beginning. Those lawsuits were initiated against the prior owner of the property.
That's really what I was getting at. I thought so. But he's, he's the new guy in town.
Yeah, so he's, he's coming into, you know, coming in to do the right thing.
He has, he has a sign out there right now that says, "No, no buses at this point," you know, so.
Right. We don't, we don't allow any large party buses. And we do allow limousines and Sprinter vans only with reservations.
All right. Any other questions?
No.
Greg, you'll, you'll get back to us on that?
Yeah, I'll get you, I'll get you something on the sound. I'll look into it.
Thank you. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is HK Ventures. This was a POS deck on Middle Country Road.
Correct, yes. So this is a, this is just a very quick update on the SECRE process and the SECRE status where we are right now. To refresh the board's memory, this is a proposed industrial development consisting of approximately 425,000 square feet of assorted industrial space. It's a 30-acre parcel located on the south side of Middle Country Road. So as you recall, the planning board, by resolution number 2020-50, back in August of last year, issued a positive declaration for the project pursuant to SECRE in its capacity as lead agency. By resolution number 2020-75, in November of last year, the board adopted a final scope to be used for the preparation of a draft environmental impact statement. The applicant, on May 10th of 2021, submitted a draft environmental impact statement to the planning board. So I'm just here to update the board on the timelines that we're going to need to maintain in order to be compliant with the SECRE regulations. The planning board as lead agency from the date of submission of the DEIS has 45 days to determine completeness and adequacy of the DEIS for public review or to specify the reasons for its unacceptability. Based upon the date of submission, the 45-day deadline puts us at June 24th of 2021. However, based on the planning board's meeting schedule, the last meeting that the board would be able to act on a resolution to either deem the DEIS adequate would fall on June 17th, 2021. There is a, there are provisions in the SECRE regulations that allow for negotiation between the applicant and the lead agency to, for an extension of time, which if that's, if the applicant would agree to that, that would should be in writing. I have referred the DEIS to our outside consultants, so they're beginning the review of that project, review of that documentation. It is, this is a sizable document. There were three binders, a lot of appendices. I'm starting to dig into it now. I'm waiting for comments back from those outside consultants, but I will have a better handle on if we're going to be able to meet those timeframes at the board's next meeting. I'll give you guys an update on the June 3rd meeting. At that time, if we maybe would like to request an extension, we can speak about that with the applicant. But that's where we are right now in terms of the submission of the DEIS and the timelines that we've got to hit for the immediate.
Greg, who was the consultant we hired for this?
We hired two consultants. We hired L.K. McLean Associates. They were reviewing the traffic component of that. And I believe the other company was Walden Associates, and they're handling the review of the other portions of it.
Right. So they have, everything's in their hands right now?
Yes.
And what, did you get any feedback from them as to how long it may take for their review?
I have not. I'm going to follow up with them. I mean, it's, it's been about a, you know, it's been a little more, a little more than 10 days. So I will follow up with them, but they have, they have received the documents and I'll, like I said, I want, I want to get the board more of an update and give us a better idea of where we're going to be at the next meeting, if we're going to be able to meet those timelines.
Well, I mean, certainly don't want to rush. This is a massive industrial subdivision. And, you know, to, to go through, how many binders? Three big binders in, in two weeks is, is a tall task. And then for us to get comments back and, and have any questions is a quick turnaround time, so, you know, hopefully we, we can be afforded some more time.
I can, I could speak with the applicant in the meantime and just, you know, let him know. Based on the size of the document, we may look for an extension. If the board would like to just, you know, we don't, like you said, we don't want to rush this. We want to make sure we're giving it the, you know, full and thorough review. So I can be, I can speak with the applicant and kind of just give them the heads up.
So these deadlines, are they recited in SECRE or is it town code?
No, that, that's recited in the SECRE.
All right. Okay, thank you.
How much can we extend it, Greg? How much, how much can we extend it?
It, it just says that the timelines can be extended by mutual agreement of the project sponsor and the lead agency. There's no, there's no guidelines to say how long you can extend, request an extension. And obviously, you want to be reasonable. You're not, so, oh, we need an extra year, but you want, you want to move this thing along. But there's no hard and fast guidelines to say how long you could extend it.
Yeah, they may give us a month, but they won't give us six months.
Yeah, exactly.
All right, okay.
All right, thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is Satow Residence in chapter 219. Brian, there we go.
This is a brief update on a chapter 219 application, last discussed at the April 1st, 2021 planning board meeting. This application is seeking approval to install a 49-square-foot hot tub and new surrounding decking at the rear of an existing residence, as well as to trim existing current bushes near the top of the bluff. Subject parcel is an approximately half-acre parcel located at 776 Sound Shore Road in Jamesport. Parcel is located approximately 2,500 feet west of Iron Pier Beach within the residence A40 zoning use district. The hot tub and deck improvements proposed by this application are not items that are permitted under chapter 219. The applicant sought a variance for these improvements, which was granted at the April 22nd, 2021 zoning board of appeals meeting by appeal number 2021-020. This action is unlisted and was previously issued, I'm sorry, by resolution number 2021-034. On April 1st, 2021, the planning board assumed lead agency status and issued a negative declaration for the proposal. As the proposal has received an appropriate DEC letter of non-jurisdiction and has received review from the town's consulting engineer with no objections and has been granted the required variance, staff recommends approval of the application.
Okay.
Unless the board has any questions.
So the hot tub, was that added afterwards or?
No, that was discussed.
That was part of it originally?
Yeah, there's been no changes to the, the plan since the, the last planning board meeting. All that's happened is the variance was sought and was granted.
And the DEC says it's not within the. And the DEC says it's not within the, uh, jurisdictional boundaries, right?
Correct.
Okay. I don't have any questions. Anybody? All right, but, yes.
Wish you good luck.
Well, that's what I was going to do. So this is probably your last time you're going to be up at the podium for us. For those of you who don't know, Brian Cunningham is, uh, going to be leaving us. This is his last official meeting. Uh, he's going to be moving on, advancing his career, I'm sure. So we just want to wish you the best for the time that you were here, and we appreciate all your hard work. Good luck to you.
Thank you, I appreciate you.
Good luck, good luck, Brian.
Overdose twenty-something and no mortgage and no obligations. You're free to go wherever you want to. But he doesn't know what you know now, so he's got to learn.
I don't have to tell him.
All right, the next item on the agenda is a public hearing for Sunken Pond Estates. We have Mr. Isler and Jefferson.
Yeah, I'm, for the record, Frank Isler, Smith Fink, Stone, Lombard, Isler, Niakabowski, 456 Griffin Avenue, Riverhead. We're special counsel to the Planning Board on the litigation of this matter that has brought us back for this hearing, and I'll explain to you, uh, the details and what we're going to be addressing today. Is it okay if I sit?
Sure, that's fine. The mics are on. They should be picking you up just fine.
Okay. This is, uh, an application for site plan approval that had been granted for section two in 2002, and section three, uh, in 2003 for the Sunken Ponds Estate, uh, development. As you know, the, uh, or you may not know, but I'll tell you anyway, the, uh, site plan had been developed in stages and sections and had completely built out and, uh, been there for, in operation for many years. At the time of the 2002 Planning Board Site Plan Approval for Section Two, and in 2003 for Section Three, the Planning Board, uh, required payment of the park and recreation fee. That's now, uh, required, required under the, it's been renumbered since, but it's 303-dash-three thirteen, uh, three fifteen of the town code in lieu of requiring, uh, parkland to be provided on the site. The applicant paid the fee under protest, and that's allowed the pro, the site plan to go forward because we had the fee. A lawsuit was subsequently commenced by the applicant challenging the imposition of the parkland fee on, on the development. And this is 2021, for those of you who may not know, it's been a while since this has happened. And, uh, there was an appeal to the appellate division at one level. Initially, the court had held that our town code provision was unauthorized. That got reversed by the appellate division that our town law provision was properly adopted and, and was, uh, valid. The matter then went back to this board, and in 2005, I believe it was, there was a supplemental hearing because the appellate division said that we needed to make findings to justify the decision to impose this park and recreation fee. A hearing was held in, in mid-two thousands, and, uh, a record was created. The Planning Board determined that the fee was proper again. And a second proceeding was brought challenging that, uh, due to a series of events, including the file getting lost by the court, which is why years have passed. Finally, the court in 2020, uh, looked at the, uh, file, looked at the, the submittals and the history, and determined to remand it again to the Planning Board, as was initially done. This time to, uh, focus on the provisions of the town law that deal with parklands and site plans, and make formal findings to, uh, determine whether or not the factors of the statute, which I will run through for you, uh, can be, have been met, or, and whether or not a fee or alternatively a park, uh, is warranted here in this circumstance. So what we're going to do today is walk through the factors that you have to consider in making this determination. What's going to be very unusual for you to, and us to wrap our heads around, is you're really going to be looking at this as the world existed in 2002 and 2003, when these site plans were being looked at. Because the statute requires that when the site plan comes to the Planning Board and an issue, uh, with respect to preserving parkland or creating parkland on the property, or alternatively, uh, placing a fee on the parkland arises, the statute requires you to do the following evaluations based on the facts at that time, not what the facts are today, because the application was made in 2002, the decisions were made in 2002 and 2003. And we'll show you what the world looked like in terms of, uh, master planning and, uh, population densities and the other factors, uh, during this hearing. So let me just run by what the requirements are. The statute is section 174-a6 of the town law with respect to parkland. And it provides that when you consider a site plan application, you have to determine whether this is an appropriate case to require park or parks to be suitably located within the town, based on the subdivision of site plan. You can also apply to site, uh, subdivisions, but same factors. A site plan, uh, application, uh, triggers, does this trigger the need for such a finding? To do that, this, I'm going to read from the statute, so you all hear it exactly as it's written. In making a determination where the parkland should be required for the, uh, as a result of this project for the, uh, somewhere in the town, the court requires that the findings that you make include an evaluation of the present and future anticipated needs for park and recreational facilities in the town, based on projected population growth, to which this particular site plan will be contributing. So we, we have to look under this factor at what is the population growth expectations for the town at the time of the application, in this case, 2002, 2003? And what impact, if any, will this particular site plan, section two and three, have on the population that would potentially trigger a finding that parkland is needed? If you determine that these are affirmatively triggered and that parkland has to be, uh, considered, then the Board has to make a second determination. And that requires whether or not a suitable public park can not be located on the subject property. In other words, you have to look at the subject, the site plan in this case, in these two sections, and determine whether or not a public park can be physically accommodated on this site. If it is, you can require that the applicant provide that on the site, and that would take care of this finding that you needed public, uh, parkland as a result of this project. If you find that it cannot properly be located on the site plan due to the configuration of the property, the development plan, or any other factors that you consider, then the fee under third, three oh one dash three fifteen can be imposed. So what we're going to hold this hearing about today is to evaluate what were the anticipated population increase for the town in 2002 and 2003? What is the, uh, estimated population increase due to these two sections of the site plan being developed? And does that, uh, does that warrant, in terms of the needs of the town, a additional parkland, whether onsite or not? If the answer to that question is it does, then we have to evaluate whether the parkland can be placed on these two sites, or a fee be imposed. So that's the kind of framework that we're working from here today. And again, you're going to be actually time warped back into 2002, 2003, because the facts we're going to present you are relevant to that period of time. Not, we're not doing hindsight evaluation of what actually has happened since then, but what were the facts that a planning board would consider prospectively based on the available information at the time? So the first thing I'm going to do, just for purposes of the record, is just, I'm going to place into the hearing record the appellate division order that I referred to earlier, so that it'll be part of the record. And I'll just put it here, and then we'll make it part of, you know, formally give it to the clerk. And the second is the court order that sent it back to us now. So they'll be part of your record. Now what we're going to do is actually start the presentation, factual presentation to you. And to do that, I'm going to have, as a witness, the town planner, Mr. Murfree, who's going to, um, we're going to together present to you the information that we were talking about. I know you all know him, I know his qualifications, but for the record, I'm going to, uh, ask Jefferson to please, uh, provide the record with his professional qualifications, his licenses, his education, and his expertise as a planner, so we can have that in the record, if that's okay. So why don't you provide that?
Uh, thank you very much. I have a bachelor's degree in geography from, from the University of Miami. I have a master's degree in city planning from Rutgers State University. I am nationally certified in planning through the American Institute of Certified Planning. I am a New York State Certified Code Enforcement Officer. I have more than sixteen years' experience as a planning board member with the Village of North Haven. I am past director of the Long Island Section of the Metro Chapter of American Planning Association, and I have more than forty years of experience as a, as a professional planner.
That's good.
That's, that's the summary.
And based on, on his credentials that he's outlined, uh, we will ask that you, uh, treat opinions that he makes, which we'll ask him to make during this process, as an expert witness in planning. So that will be something we'll request of you, uh, that you accept that testimony based on his credentials. Now, uh, Jefferson, uh, prior to your coming here today, did you review the planning department's files for section two and section three of Sunken Pond Estates?
Yes.
And did you also review, um, the master plan of the town that was adopted in 2003?
I did.
Okay. Now, are you, um, familiar with the process the 2003 master plan went through prior to its being adopted?
Yes.
Okay, and can you tell the Board, first of all, uh, for those of the Board members who may not know this, who was the lead agency in the master plan study?
Uh, back for the adopted 2003 comprehensive plan, that was the town, or Riverhead Planning Board.
Okay, so this board was the lead agency?
Correct.
And approximately, how long did the review process and study process take for the comprehensive review of the town's needs from a land use point of view until 2003, when it was adopted?
It started in 1998 and was adopted in 2003.
So approximately a five-year period?
Correct.
And during that time, the Planning Board's lead agency would have been, uh, involved in every stage of the evaluations, the, uh, information that was being provided, the recommendations of planners with respect to, uh, changes to the town zoning laws in effect at the time, and also what the long-range plan for development should be for the town?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. And you personally have fully reviewed the master plan? You work with it constantly as part of your responsibilities now as the town, uh, Director of Planning here?
I do.
Okay. Now, at the time, uh, the town, the Planning Board was reviewing and acting on the 2002 uh, application for the section two, uh, Sunken Pond Estates, uh, site plan, as well as the 2003 section three, uh, section. The Planning Board would have been fully familiar with the population, uh, uh, projections that are contained in the site plan, uh, the site plan, I'm sorry, the master plan?
Uh, they would have, yes.
And also the, uh, recommendations as to future land use and development of the town?
They would have, yes.
Okay. Now, turning your attention to the master plan for 2003, and for the record, I'm going to, um... I'm going to, I'll get the...
Just to make sure you're excited with the microphone, the papers.
Oh, these are.
It's close to this mask.
I'm sorry, they're, okay, I'm sorry.
Sorry, Laurie.
Okay, uh, section two of the 2003 master plan deals with land use element. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And within this sect, in this, uh, section of the 2003 master plan is an evaluation of population projections, uh, for the town of Riverhead?
That is correct.
And could you, just for the record, tell us where in the, uh, this section, the, the evaluation, uh, can be found?
Uh, this is in section, uh, 2.4 on page 23.
Okay, and for the record, the entire section of this part of the master plan is going to be part of your record here. Now, in looking at that report and the population report particularly, what does it show for the year, total year-round population for 2000, the year 2000?
Twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and sixty.
What does it show for the year 2003 as a total year-round population?
Thirty thousand nine hundred and fifty-six.
And, uh, it likewise also shows a total build-out projected population, uh, and could you tell us what that number is?
Fifty-one thousand four hundred and thirty-eight.
And can you explain to us what is meant in this report by a total build-out?
That's when you take and calculate the projected number of dwelling units in the town, and you multiply it by a per person, a per dwelling unit factor of 2.5 people per dwelling unit.
And that would be based on the, uh, zoning in effect?
Uh, that is correct. Two persons per, 2.5 persons per household.
So the, in 2000, the population, uh, year-round was two, twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and sixty, and that was based on the census, was it not?
Uh, the 2000 U.S. Census, correct.
And the projected build-out is almost double that amount, is it not?
That is correct.
So would you consider that, in your opinion, a, um, substantial increase in population if it were to take effect?
Absolutely, yes.
And in the master plan of 2003, was there an analysis of the need for future parks and recreation facilities?
There's an entire chapter devoted to that.
Okay, and that's chapter 11?
That is correct.
We're going to make chapter 11 part of your record. It is the section called Parks and Recreation Element. Now, have you had an opportunity to review this section?
I have.
Can you, excuse me, can you just take that off the mic so that you can make sure?
I heard it somewhere, I didn't know where.
I just want to make sure everybody can hear you, thank you.
I apologize for, I usually stand over there. Okay, so we have put, uh, section 11 into the record here. And, uh, the evaluation of the needs for parkland and recreation facilities set forth in 11, section 11, are they based in part at least on the projected increase of population that is reported in section two?
They are.
Okay. Now, could you summarize, uh, and the whole report is in your record, and you'll have an opportunity to fully review it, and rather than take your time and read the whole thing to you? to you, I'm going to ask Jefferson to summarize the findings that were made pertinent to park and recreation facilities into the future. So would you do that for us, please?
Absolutely. I'm going to summarize to the maximum extent possible, but there are sections that I feel that are relevant to be read verbatim into the record. So bear with me, please. According to the 2003 comprehensive plan, at that time, Riverhead quote, "had a relatively large amount of parkland for the population levels." That's including county and state parks and schoolyards. Riverhead had approximately seventy-one acres of parkland for each 1,000 residents as of the year 2000. According to the National Recreation and Park Association, and that's the national norm used elsewhere in the country, recommends that a municipality provide between 6.25 up to 10.5 acres of parks per 1,000 residents. Based upon this ratio, Riverhead is far above the minimum standards, meaning that it has more than enough parkland to meet the resident demand. However, if the town parks and schoolyards are alone counted, subtracting out the county and state parks, Riverhead had only 6.6 acres per 1,000 residents. That number is just barely above the minimum national park standard. Based upon the active recreation facilities that are located in the park at that time, the master plan states, quote, "There is a particular need for more such facilities. In focus groups, the participants noted that recreational facilities were overcrowded." It goes on to say that as population continues to increase, overcrowding will continue to worsen unless additional recreational facilities are built. Based upon the build-out estimate in Chapter Two of the comprehensive plan, the town's ultimate population expectation would reduce the amount of parkland per resident from, let me just get the number right, from 71.1 down to about 40.0. That ratio of parkland and schoolyards would be reduced from 6.6 to about 3.2 acres per resident. That suggests that the build-out, the town would have an adequate amount of overall parkland, including county and state, but a deficient amount of town parkland. In order to meet the national park standards for town parks, Riverhead would need at that time to add an additional 75 to 250 acres of active parkland to meet future needs. And this would have to be provided by the town. The recreation element goes on to describe the different types of parks, including neighborhood parks, schoolyard parks, community parks, and recreational facilities. In terms of identifying recreational needs, this is on page six, as noted, the evaluation national, national standard suggests that the Riverhead needs additional land for more active recreational facilities. The town's recreation director at that time confirmed the need for an additional gym facility and that provides for space for wintertime sports activities. At that time, indoor programs and lessons were provided by the recreation department at the Armory Building and the town schools around the school schedules. At that time, there was a recognition that there was already a need, the town board designated a portion of the enterprise park as a public park, this is the one at Epcal, in order to augment the facilities at Stotsky Park. The recreation committee of the town planning to survey the community relative to the priority and needs and to develop a park plan for the 62-acre facility. The recreation element goes on to state the need for greenways to connect the town parks, additional improvements needed and access for waterfront parks. And then it goes on to have an entire section devoted towards the parks and recreation needs, and those are outlined on page 11, in terms of goals and policies. I'm going to summarize these rather than go through them one by one. The first policy I'm going to reference is Policy 11.1B, proceed with plans to design and develop a 62-acre community park at Epcal and set aside a significant portion of the park for activation facilities. Since the town is expected to need additional recreational facilities in the future, this is quoted out of the plan, the newly planned town recreational park at Epcal should provide playing fields, courts, and other amenities. This is consistent with the town's preliminary vision for the park, which is expected to include soccer and lacrosse fields, a playground, tennis courts, a volleyball court, a picnic area, bocce carts, bocce courts, and chess tables. Under Policy 11.1C, as previously noted, the town may require at least 75 and as much as 250 acres of additional parkland for recreational facilities in the future, and that the town should continue to monitor use and patterns in order to assess exactly how much land will be required when new facilities may be needed. The next section talks about other facilities needed to meet the town's park demand, and this is a really critical part to the overall need assessment in the town at that time. The town at that time was using schoolyard parks to provide active recreation facilities during the off-school hours, and the policy's gone to say that we should be having more coordination with the school district to have, for town residents to have access to facilities. The fact that they were relying so much on school facility is an indication of the need for additional town facilities. There's also an explorer, exploration of the need for an indoor gym and fitness center, an indoor pool, increased lighting and outdoor sporting facilities, a new community facility in the downtown or the western area of the town. In terms of promoting neighborhood parks, the national park standard, and this was a national standard, this also was described back in the town code at that time under Section 108-97B14, the subdivisions are required to provide five acres of park space for every 100 dwelling units. It goes on to recommend the establishment of public greenways linking the park systems together. And the last really big section has to do with, to require new subdivisions to provide a required park space in the form of a greenway. If, and this is why we quote this, "The planning board deems that the required parkland would be inadequate and unsuitable as a park, the developer can pay a fee in lieu of providing the park space. The fees are then deposited to a special fund." Under Policy 11.4 Subsection B, "Provide centers for homeowners associations or neighborhooded corporations for establishing and maintaining public trails through open spaces in clustered subdivisions when appropriate." It goes on to recommend improvements at other parks, such as Iron Pier Park, Waiting River, Beach, Stotsky Park, and other community facilities. It goes on to recommend that there be public beach access to waterfront areas. And that's just a general summary of that chapter.
Jefferson, based on your expertise and your review of the document, do you have an opinion that the master plan in 2003 identified a substantial amount of need in the town for town-owned and operated parkland and recreation facilities?
Uh, it does. It says that we needed at that time an additional 75 to 250 acres of parkland.
And it also contemplated that in light of the increased build-out for population that almost doubled the current 2,000 population, that that would be a factor that had to be considered, and that was a basis for this master plan to recommend all these additional town facilities and parks to meet that anticipated demand, is that correct?
That is absolutely correct.
Okay. Now, I'd like to turn your attention specifically to the two site plan sections. And let's start with section number two. First of all, it's correct to say that the subdivision is subject, the site plan rather, is subject to a requirement that its occupants be 55 years or older.
That is correct.
Based on that standard and requirement that they must comply with, what would be the per person, per unit rate that you would anticipate?
Uh, because its age is restricted, the per person dwelling unit ratio would be reduced, and reduced down to two people per dwelling unit. So with the approved 192 dwelling units, that comes out to 384 residents.
And the, the number that you just gave, gave for the approved units is after Section Two?
The 192?
Yes.
That's for all three sections. Section Two alone was 76 units.
And Section Three?
Uh, 84 dwelling units.
Okay. And you said there was a third one?
Uh, those were Sections Two and Three, and then the first one was 32 dwelling units.
Okay.
You add those three together to get to 192.
So what was Two and Three again, please?
Uh, Section Two was 76 dwelling units, and Section Three was 84.
So if my math is correct, they're adding 160 people to the town population once they get occupied?
Uh, 384.
I'm just doing the two, Section Two and Three.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, you add the, yes, correct, add the 76 and the 84 together,
And based on your opinion, as an expert planner, would the 160 new residents create a demand for recreation facilities in the town?
They would.
And would that have been included in the concepts and evaluations made in the 2003 master plan with respect to the need for recreational and additional parklands?
Yes.
Just a question on that calculation. It was 76 units in Two and 84 in Three?
That is correct.
And didn't you say that there was a multiplier based on the age factor of those units?
Uh, two people per dwelling unit.
Okay, so it's not, it's not the units that you said?
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, yes.
More than that, right?
Yes, I apologize. Thank you for catching me on that. It's really 320.
Right.
And using that number, thanks to the chairman's correction, if 160 was going to have a clear impact on the need for parkland and recreation facilities in the future, certainly 320 would, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, now, do you have with you here today the overall site plan for the entire Sunken Pond Estates, particularly the map last prepared May 1st, 2001, I'm sorry, March 22nd, 2002?
I do.
Okay. And would you, why don't you open it up and take a look at the overall plan? And for the record of this hearing, we're only really going to put into the record the first page of this document, which is the entire site plan, not all the subsequent sheets that deal with engineering and other factors. It's really here pertinent only to show the layout of the property for purposes of the possibility of locating parkland for the public on the site. So, Jefferson, would you kindly open the map so you can see the whole?
I, I can't get it.
Yeah, it's going, oh, it's going to be, yeah. Yeah, maybe.
Take it over to the two microphones.
Well, that, what's in front of you, Jefferson, really doesn't matter, you could just flip it under, and it'd fit.
Karen Stuck, I've got a question for you. We're trying to identify a park that the public would use. These are private roads, how would the general public ever get to use?
Well, we're going to discuss why it can't be done on this site. One of the reasons of what you just identified, the requirement of the town law, 174, that we're talking about here, would allow a planning board, if they found there was proper suitable acreage to put a public park on a subdivision map or a site plan map, that can be legally imposed on the applicant, just like you can require reserved areas or buffer areas. That is, you have to make the appropriate findings that there's a need, the population increase, the things we're going through here today. You could find, and within your power and authority, that there's a need for parkland because the site plan or subdivision's being developed, that in examining the particular site, there is five acres that we could, or whatever, you know, 10 acres, whatever the need is determined to be, available, that is suitable in terms of its layout and can probably be used for a park in terms of access, parking facilities, and that kind of thing. And that could be in your approval, that you're granting site plan approval to the ABC site plan. Condition number four is that 10 acres be made for public park based on the following findings, and then it would be the kind of findings that, of the facts that we're going through here. Population increase for the town, the impact of the additional people here, the analyzed need for more parkland based on that population increase for the whole town, and due to the fact there's ample acreage on this particular applicant site, we can place that new parkland here. If you can't find a proper site on the subject property, whoever the applicant is, then you can require the payment of the, in lieu of the, instead of providing us with a park, you're going to pay the $3,000 fee under our code.
Wasn't that talked about in previous discussions? Because of the fact that their age, the people that would be living there would be over 55, chances of them using a park facility would be various, would be minimal, and then you've got to get the public to get there. And I thought those are all the reasons that, themselves, that why it couldn't be done.
Yeah, but it's just not parkland, the way you're explaining it, it's also recreation services, like the senior center?
Oh, yes, yes.
The Meals on Wheels, it's all of that stuff, it's not just a park, it's the park and rec together, combined.
It's all of the, the town-sponsored park and recreational facilities and land that provides those services. For example, a community senior center would have to be located on the land somewhere, so it'd either be leased or owned by the municipality.
So, Joe, to, to answer your question and correct if I'm wrong, that age group, as they age, would use town services even more for Meals on Wheels and senior service, senior services, the rec center and those types of things.
That's certainly a finding that this planning board could make on this record.
But that facility also has its own, not senior center, but recreation center for the people that live there.
Right. And let me address that, and we'll even get into it a little bit later at the conclusion of our hearing on this particular issue, because it's been raised by the applicant. The fact that there is an onsite private facility for the residents there does not satisfy the statute requirement. It has to be, the courts have construed this as being a parkland for the public. And because, and in addition to that, the people that live there, and even if they use the community facilities onsite, they may have a pool, they may have tennis courts, whatever they are, they'll still go to the town beaches, they'll still go to Epcal's new ball fields if they want to, it's all available to them. And in fact, we have an affidavit that we filed in the court in this pending litigation from Richard Hanley, when he was the planner, and he specifically said that there, based on the planning department's analysis of usage, people who live in these communities that have a private community club or facility also use the town facilities outside of it. So the increase in population on these sites triggers the need for public town facilities. The statute requires it to be a public town facility, if it's onsite or not, and we'll, Jefferson's now going to talk about the feasibility of making a town park on this property and why, in his opinion, it is not feasible to do that. So if you'd like, we can get to that analysis now. So if you would look, Jefferson, at, this is the site plan for the entire sections, all the sections marked, it includes Sections Two and Three, but it's the whole parcel being developed. And when you, would you kindly look at this plan, Jefferson, and indicate to us, in your professional opinion and expert opinion, are there any proper suitable areas on this for a parkland, and what would be the acreage requirement that would be necessary for such a park?
Sure. This property is located off of Middle Road, it has a gatehouse, it is a private gated community, so therefore it will be inaccessible to the general public, and it has been designed as such. Uh, this is a 160-foot park. and it has been designed as such. The access into the site is through, not through town-designed road standards, is through a private road, driveway type of road width and capacity. The park demand for this, based upon the national recreational standards that I referenced earlier, would mandate that eight acres of public parkland would be required for this size of development. And so this project was not designed with that acreage in mind. They have open space. They have wooded areas. Yes.
And, and in your looking at the site plan approval for this, the wooded areas were required to be preserved. Is that correct?
And those are outlined, outlined and laid out in a fragmented area throughout the development. So that does not provide a direct connectivity from one end to the, to the other.
Okay. So the factors that you listed are, first of all, it's a gated community. There's no capability of locating eight acres of contiguous property, even connectable property to create the required size park. Based on those facts, in your opinion, can a suitable park, public park be properly located on this entire site plan?
No.
Jefferson, just a question, again, trying to keep our minds in 2002 and 2003.
Yes.
This site plan that was ultimately approved was submitted on a preliminary basis by the developer, and it was laid out how he wanted to develop it at that time, correct?
Correct.
So it was probably maximized for as many units as he could get without any consideration given towards, how many acres? Eight acres of parkland?
Correct.
So that was, I just want to be clear that that is what was submitted by the developer to the planning board for, to consider for approval?
And, and to follow up on that thought, nor did the applicant make an offer to the town to create such an area. You know, he may have had this plan and then still make an offer to compromise or to get approval. That never occurred as far as I'm aware.
He would have had to have eight acres somewhere else that he could give to the town. Is that what you're saying?
No, I'm talking about on the site here.
On the site.
Yeah.
From, from day one, this was private. How could it ever be publicly, Ed brought it up. I was going to bring it up. How could it ever be a public park? It wouldn't be possible.
In our, and Jefferson stated opinion, that's why we feel that the statutory factor that we had to look at, which is, can you properly put a public park on this site if it's doable? We have to consider that. And we're hearing our town planner, in his expert opinion, say there is no way that could be done for all the reasons that you've said and the chairman said, as well as the physical layout of the property. So that, that's the, that factor being presented to you.
And 17, 18 years have gone by, and this has been, this has been in the courts for this long?
It's been in the courts for this long. It's been, as I said, there was a period of time where the file was actually lost by the court. The applicant didn't immediately try to push the case to keep it going. And then ultimately, a new council was retained and we all packaged a new set of papers to get it into the court.
What was the timeline between this lost?
The, the lawsuit was in Article 78 that was brought when the site plan approvals were granted because of the statute limitations, you know, it was a short one. And there was an appeal that took place, that took several, you know, between the lower court ruling initially and an appeal that took probably two or three years. It came back here. We had a hearing here, I believe in '05. It then went back to court, and that's when the file got lost. And it only got reactivated, I believe, in '18. It went for about 10 years.
Over 10 years. What, what do we, do we have any, I mean, what do we say over?
The applicant.
Just forgot about it? Did he forget about it as well?
I'm sorry?
Did he forget about it as well for 13 years?
I, I don't know how to answer that because I don't know what he was thinking. But I can tell you that he was the petitioner. It was his case to pursue. And for whatever reasons, I, I don't know what his actual thinking was.
We said at the beginning that they, in order to move forward, they had to give us a check under protest.
Yes. And we've been paid, and they're, they're looking to get that money back.
Yeah. I mean, we were able to cash it. We could have said aside, say we can't touch it.
Yeah, they, all they had to do to preserve their claim, that they're entitled to get it back, is to write under protest. That didn't stop the town from negotiating the check, putting it into the escrow, you know, the fund for this.
How much was it?
It was, section two was 228,000. And section three, I believe, was 252,000, based on what I'm reading here in the decision. And that, that was paid under protest. The town received the money. That's why the site plan went forward. It was a condition.
Didn't section one have the same issue?
No, it didn't. They paid it without, without a protest. So I just have one more question of our expert, and then we'll close our part of the presentation to the board. Based on all the facts that you've testified to today about the needs, the population growth, the needs of the town for additional parkland to set forth in the master plan, the inability, in your opinion, for an onsite park, is it your opinion that the imposition of the fee under 301-315 would be the appropriate step here for the planning board?
Absolutely.
Okay. That, unless there are any questions from the board, that would conclude our presentation.
I do have one last question. So we referenced the 2003 master plan throughout your hearing today and presentation. But section two and section three were likely in process prior to.
Right.
So my question would be, the information, factual information that you presented today, Jefferson, was that factual information available prior to those dates?
Yeah, that, that, well, you can answer that. That's why we went through the history that the planning board was the lead agency for five years.
So it was leading up to the 2003 document?
Yes, they were.
And it was, the information was readily available?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
I mean, you can confirm that as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because he's reviewed the file. It, it was, the planning board would have had full knowledge of this.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, unless you have any.
I think we kind of, we kind of asked them as we went along. If there's anything, we come up to the podium.
Good afternoon, Richard. I was counsel to the planning board. I see Mr. Egan on the Zoom screen there. And I just wanted to address, Mr. Egan sent to the board today for distribution, I believe it was distributed to you, a memo that I wrote February 29th, 2000, that confirmed an arithmetic calculation that the improvements at a site plan approval from 2000 regarding Saddle Lakes was in excess of the fee that might have been charged at that time. And that issue of the planning board decision not to charge Saddle Lakes in 2000, prior to these approvals of section one, where Sunken Ponds paid the fee without protest, section two, where they paid it with the protest, section three, where they paid it with the protest, was raised by them in their papers. And since Mr. Egan sent my memo, I just feel that I need to clear for the record that this was not something that we've hidden from the court or would hide from you in today's presentation. I wrote a memorandum of law, which I'm going to submit into your record and submitted to the court, which explained that at the time, the Saddle Lakes presentation was made, there was a misguided and frankly incorrect opinion of Mr. Hanley and myself, that private facilities could be equated to public facilities. And that is not the law, as I understand it today, that private facilities may not be substituted for the public facilities set forth in the town law requirements and the town code requirements. And concomitant to that memorandum that I submitted to the court explaining that is an affidavit of Mr. Hanley, which I will also put into your record today, again, since it's been raised in the, submitted by Mr. Egan, where Mr. Hanley states, however, since granting this credit to Saddle Lakes, planning staff has confirmed that the residents served by private facilities also use public facilities, which are constructed with monies from the fee that we're discussing today. And Mr. Hanley goes on to say that no applications for waiver of fees have been considered since the Saddle Lakes determination. And my personal recollection, as I stand here today, back to 2003, when Mr. Cuddy actively pursued whether this subdivision or site plan should pay the fees, was that it was a, a matter of, of debate at the town board level, as well as at the planning board level. And as a result of that intense public debate, it was determined that the fee should be imposed, as it was in section one, and it was paid, and it was in section two, and it was in section three, and it has been subsequently. So I do not believe that that is a proper issue before you today. And I note that the court, in their decision, asking this board to further consider the matter that we're engaged in this further consideration today, did not raise that as an issue to be considered by the board. So that's why I make the comments that I make.
And if I, I just can add one point of law that I don't, I don't think I heard Dick say, but I would say it in case he didn't. The error that was made by the planning board waiving that fee at that time cannot stop, prevent a municipality from being bound by a mistake. And that is a critical factor, that you're, you know, a mistake gets made on a building permit being issued or whatever, it's not, you're not, no longer required to adhere to a mistake. And I just added that.
Thank you. Okay, you finished with your presentation?
Yes.
Okay, so any comments from the applicant or the applicant's representative? I think you said Mr. Egan was on?
Yes. Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the board. Thank you for your time today. I do feel, to echo Mr. Eisler, that we were a bit of a time warp on this application. But my name is Brian Egan. I represent Sunken Ponds Estates Incorporated. With me is Robert Havacy and Grant Havacy, principals of the corporation. I just would like to say, to start off, I'm delighted to see Mr. Eisler in such good form after this pandemic, a friend and colleague, and I'm glad to see him well today. He sounds excellent. So it's, it's delightful to see, even virtually, you there, Frank, today. Let me start off by saying that I agree with Mr. Eisler's recitation of the procedural history and the tortured course that this has had with the courts. One of the questions from the board members was, you know, what kind of happened to this? And I think that Mr. Eisler and I are both equally stumped at the course that this took through judicial retirements, remands from the appellate division, and then finally, we end up here in this boardroom, or at least virtually. Let me talk about Mr. Eisler's recommendation to the board that we talked about as the world existed. And there are a couple of fundamental points on that. Town law 274A six is very clear that this board must make two findings today, or in its decision, that a parkland assessment must be made if the, if the property order does not set aside adequate parkland. They must find that there is an appropriate case for requiring a park. And that goes into the, the population mix, the ages, the burdens on the school district, the recreational needs. And two, if a suitable park cannot be properly located on the site, they can, they can assess that fee. I would object today to any consideration of the 2003 master plan, whether it was in draft or not, or, or in circulation in some way, it was not a formally adopted document of the town. And I would object to any considerations of it. If this board decides to consider that master plan nonetheless, I would say this board should focus on the one conclusion that Mr. Murphy cited, that the quote was, there is more than enough parkland in Riverhead. There's no basis to exclude county or state parkland from that calculation. And it's undisputed at a conclusion of the town in the master plan that there is more than enough parkland. And I would say that that would rest the case. The second point is that the master plan references recreational facilities. And when they use the term recreational facilities, they don't mean grass, baseball fields. It explicitly says that we should consider other community assets, such as pools, such as recreational buildings, recreational buildings that allow the residents to conduct, quote, indoor winter activities. Well, I respectfully submit to the board that Sunken Ponds Estates has a very expensive, very large recreational building that fulfills that need. And two, goes on to provide a very expensive pool. And I would say, as the master plan recommends, putting aside that they say there's enough parkland, but two, that there should be other recreational facilities of the type specifically provided by Sunken Ponds. And I also think, if I can turn to some of the points that were raised by the members, and I'm going to ask later in the presentation, Mr. Havacy, Grant Havacy, to affirm some of these facts. But the average age in Sunken Ponds is 68 years old. Our facilities respectfully cover all onsite of that population's recreational needs. And one member asked a question on whether private roads, how do you get access to private roads? And if there's private roads, aren't those, then facilities off limits to members of the public. Respectfully, that's not the calculation that has to be taken, taken into account because the 274- A6, town law 274- A6, and the case law that's interpreted that talks about the residential needs of the population base in the project. So we had a, a, a apartment building built downtown, let's say the apartment building, say across from Town Hall, built curb line to curb line with zero recreational facilities. That would be an interesting calculation. But what you have here is you have a, a, a property that's developed with the recreational needs to service the new population. As Mr. Murphy referenced, the population growth that was expected from this, from this project. And what is this population impact on the town? At an average age of 68, I would say, from a scientific standpoint, they're not contributing many students to the school district. However, they receive no tax abatement for that purpose. They pay 100% of the school district's taxes and yet contribute zero children to the tax, to the school district burden. I would also say that when the question was raised was how could on a private property be parkland for the public? From a policy standpoint and from a practical standpoint, and as the case law has said, that's not really the proper analysis. If the project itself supplies adequate parkland, then there should not be any parkland assessment. then there should not be any parkland assessment. Why? Because you've now allowed, brought in a population that's not contributing at all to our school district taxes, our school district burden, yet contributing 100% of its fair share to the school district. From a policy standpoint, you want that economic development. That's a provider, that's a net giver, as opposed to a tager. And then also, the flip side is, you want to encourage developers to, to maintain and develop these facilities on their projects. Because the alternative is, they develop none, they pay for it, and they shift the development cost and the ongoing maintenance to the town. And that cannot be a sustainable or thoughtful approach to parkland development to force every resident off of their project, onto a town project that the town, in general, will now have to maintain into perpetuity. Another question that was raised was the binding effect of the developer having submitted these plans and committed to this project. I would say that that is correct, that the developer did propose this project based on the knowledge of what happened with Saddle Lakes, the Pondview-Saddle Lake project, and the waiver that occurred there. And the developer, if that wasn't the precedent, which by the way, it only occurred 24 months before this project. It was a 2000 approval, I want to get the exact date, February 9th, 2000, recommendation, and a March 3rd, 2000 resolution of this board. So it was then, very, very recent history, that, that this developer could have clustered even more their project, clustered it in corners, and found a way to dedicate a town road and a public park. But they chose not to, and they chose to assume that maintenance burden going forward. And if, if you could bear with me, I know that there was a lot of math in, in this project, but there was approximately, or is, as you say, $480,000 in recreational fee which is challenged in this hearing. The costs of the project, recreational costs totaled $752,947. And if I could call at this point, if I could draw your attention first to one of the submissions that I have provided to the board is a profit and loss statement from Sunken Ponds Estates Inc. And if I could ask, Mr. Chairman, could you leave Mr. Grant Havacy's sworn in? What is the procedure before the board?
No, just identify yourself and, and your affiliation. But could I ask you that profit and loss statement that you're going to read from? Is that from today or from 2002 or 2003?
That's a good question, and I'm going to lead off with that, so thank you. Let me introduce Grant Havacy. Mr. Havacy is currently the managing partner. In 2003, he was the assistant to the project manager. Mr. Havacy?
Yes, Grant. Grant Havacy.
You heard the chairman's question. Answer that, please.
Yes, the, the, the profit and loss statement is from the, from the time period that we're talking about of the, the 2003 time period. It's just been archived, geez, now, 17 years, so. But that's, that's from that time period after we built it. We had a specific books, as we always do, for the recreational facilities.
Right, but the sections two and three weren't built yet or occupied at that time?
The clubhouse was built in conjunction with section two. Yeah, we built, phase three was after that, phase, phase, yeah.
But the profit and loss statement, okay, you just told me it was from 2002?
No, I mean, it's, it's a right, I mean, it's at, it's in the time period that it's when we have built it.
This profit and loss statement mine is February 26, 21.
Yeah, that was mine, that was what I requested you print it out. Yep, that was my request to be printed out on that. This is our type of copy. You know what, let me, let me, let me make this clear. So, Mr. Havacy, do you recall in, in what the total clubhouse construction cost was for phase two and phase three?
I, honestly, I'm sorry, I provided it to you the other day. I don't have it in front of me. It was, it was, it was certainly, it was an X, it was, I'm sorry, I'm mistaken. I would have to defer to you on what I gave you, okay?
If I ask the board members to turn-
I don't want to, I don't want to misleading on the paper.
Yeah, so, so if I ask the board members to turn to the page that has at the top clubhouse written there, and it has a net income. Again, this is not a traditional profit and loss, this is more of an accounting of costs. Is that correct, Mr. Havacy?
Yes, that is correct.
And the total cost for, the clubhouse cost is $680,253.36. Is that correct?
That would be perfect.
And, and the cost, as reflected on this accounting, has a hard cost of $439,940.70. That's the building construction?
Correct.
And it has site work of $123,626.66. Do you recall what that was?
Site work would be attributed to items like the, you know, you have the, you know, we have bocce courts, we have horseshoe, the, you know, the, the landscaping, all the grounds around it. There's a pond back there, so everything to kind of finalize the exterior of the, of the building, or the area of the building.
And that would also be the electric insulation for it, Belgium block insulation, all of the decorative items that make up that?
Yes, all, all infrastructure for the building, parking, lighting, asphalt, you know, all that.
And soft costs are also included of $116,686. And soft costs are property amenities, building amenities, or inside the recreational facility?
The soft costs would be attributed to architectural fees, you know, fees of, you know, not purchases like that, not like we have, there's an exercise room in the clubhouse. So not a treadmill would not be a soft cost, you know?
Okay. On the second sheet that was also provided, on the second set of sheets, there's, at the title, at the top, it says swimming pool. And it has a cost of $72,694.33. Do you know if that accurately reflects the expense of installing the swimming pool at Sunken Pond?
Yes, so that would be directly related to, to just the swimming pool, yeah.
So the cost between the $680,000 clubhouse and the $72,000 swimming pool is approximately $752,000.
Correct.
And with that fee, that expense, on a $480,000 proposed recreation fee, the actual amenities provided by the developer far outstrip that amount. And if you turn to the documents that were, that we submitted to the planning board this morning, the first is a cover sheet on the Pondview-Saddle Lakes project to Mr. Danowski. The fax cover sheet that, that calculates for that project an $807,000, $807,000, $700 total fee for a rec building and pool, additionally of a tennis court, but for the exact two elements that we claim to request, the, the set off for the policy, legal, and practical reasons I outlined earlier in the article. Following that is a memorandum from Mr. Ellers, February 29, 2000. Mr. Ellers, I heard him, I didn't see him, I owe, I owe you as well, as well. Where he recommends that the applicant will be required, in, in Saddle Lakes, the applicant will be required to pay $392,000 in parks and recreation fees. The facilities to be provided by the developer have an estimated cost of $807,700. These costs far exceed the $2,000 per unit fee of the town of Riverhead. The next document that I provided was the March 3rd, 2000 Planning Board Resolution, wherein the then-chairperson, Barbara Glass, recites, as chairman, but as chairwoman, but then is passed by the board, that in the resolution number five, that due to the fact, quote, that due to the fact that the cost of proposed recreational facilities to be constructed onsite exceed the recreation fee of $392,000, such fee is not applicable.
But that's Saddle Lakes.
That's Saddle Lakes, correct. So my argument to the board today is that based on that precedent, that this board is bound by that and that this developer relied upon that. And to Mr. Isler's point about a stoppage doesn't lie, and that the, a, a municipality can make corrections at any time to a municipal area, I would, I would respectfully submit that this was not a mistake by the town in the Saddle Lakes decision. To recast it now as a mistake, I believe is disingenuous. And I, I believe that our developer was proper in relying upon that and that the conclusion Mr. Ellers met then, came to then, was correct, and that it would be correct today. And I feel that having been a municipal lawyer for a long time, but also the multiple times that the courts have sent this back or recommended that this come back to this board, the developer have proper record, that the analysis that the developer proposes today is the proper analysis from a practical standpoint, from a legal standpoint, and from a policy standpoint, to encourage developers to retain and maintain the recreational facilities on their own projects. And in conclusion, I would respectfully request that this board uphold its Saddle Lakes precedent and continue, properly under the law, and issue a refund of the $480,000 recreation fees assessed against this project. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Egan. I'm still trying to put together in my own head this profit and loss statement that you provided. It does say February 26, 2021. Is that just a date it was put together, but the numbers are from 2002, 2003?
I, I want to, I want to let Mr. Havacy answer that directly, for the record.
Yes, for the record, we, the books again were, these are archived books, so we went back into them and we had printed them on that date.
Okay.
But they are of the time.
Okay, so another question, I have a couple, George, if I, if I could. The facilities that are onsite today, the swimming pool you mentioned, can I go there tonight and go swimming?
If you were a resident, yes.
I'm not a resident.
Yeah.
I'm not a resident.
I would probably say then, no.
Okay.
Unless you were a guest.
Okay, and you also had mentioned an average age of 68 years of the residents that are there? So is that today or back in 2002 or 2003?
Mr. Havacy?
Back, back, back then, when we're, of the time period we're talking about.
Okay. And you also made some references or made some points about, specific to parkland. But again, it's not only parkland, the way it was presented to us today. It's, it's also the, the senior rec services, I mean, 68 are, are certainly qualified seniors. So do you have any information today on how frequently those residents go to the senior center for activities or get Meals on Wheels? Do you have any information for that for us today?
No, and I, I think that that's a, that's a good question. And I think the response to that is, the, the recreational investment that this client did, that Sunken Ponds did, is nearly two times the proposed fee. So I think that in that gap is well made up. Whatever potential impact on, say, Meals on Wheels or, you know, the Bridge Club or some other recreational facility that they can't get onsite somewhere else, it, it, it is way in excess of that.
Right, but being that it's private and not public, you know, these numbers were provided when the project was being built. So couldn't we consider that as a, a marketing tool to attract potential purchases? To say that, hey, we have our own onsite swimming pool and, and it's just helps you sell the units because it's all private? To me, it would be, you know, a, a marketing tactic to get people to buy there as this was being developed.
Yes, and I, I, I agree with that 100%. And I think it also is, the corollary to that is, and by the way, don't go into the town and burden their pool, you've got your own. Don't go down into, you know, wherever else. Be gathered with your friends in the recreational hall here.
And do you know, I guess this would be for Mr. Havacy, when that site plan was originally submitted to the town planning board back at that time, did they offer eight acres of parkland or offer any dedicated parkland for the whole town?
Can I, I cannot speak to all the conversations that may have happened in, obviously, the, you know, so, so records, but, of that. But the, there was never an option to say, hey, you could set aside so much because in, in communities we've built in the past, you, you could always set aside where you could dedicate land, you could really have dedicated the front portion of the property. Let's say, we'll just call the front eight acres, created a town, a proper town road in there, and then the private access could have then begun after that period. And then you could have further clustered, there was plenty of acreage, there were 60 acres. There were 52 acres, again, you know, would have easily accommodated the 192 condominiums. Maybe there'd be one less pond or something, but it would have, you could have easily accommodated, but the option was not presented.
Right, but at that time, you or your company paid the recreation fees under protest, but it still wasn't offered when you protested?
No, no, I, I, I'm sorry, then, to clarify, the option from planning back to us was not, or, or the dialogue was not, you can do this in lieu of paying 400, and remember, it's actually more than that in the sense of this community's development. It's probably close to 580,000 if you include phase one, just for the, for the clarification that if, and you would design this up front, that if we were given the option to not pay a half a million dollars, almost $600,000, and dedicate a front portion of eight acres, donate it to the town, and then create the park up front, and then just have a private development that's gated after that, we could have, I mean, I'm, again, without being an engineer, I mean, we could-
No, I, I, I follow your answer, I understand.
Yeah.
Um, any, any other questions from the board?
I have one, Carl. As, as part of your expense-
I, I would also add one thing to, with, with Mr. Egan's, and also that I think is, and if there was ever an analysis done about how much services, you know, parkland services, and then you, and then we say it's not just park services, it's senior services, all these accessory services, considering the fact that the town mandated this to be an age-restricted community where it prevents children, school-aged children to come, that the boom to the town for having all this, there would also be a, there would have to be an offsetting factor knowing that in that financial calculation, the tax, the tax gain to the town could certainly accommodate the percentage of residents who need additional services.
Okay.
As part of your expense ratio with regard to this, this build out of all your facilities here that we're showing profit and loss statements, these are un-audited, first of all. I'm not saying anything, not saying that they're not, that they're not accurate. But as part of your expense ratio, would you tell me that you divided the expenses between all the unit owners? I mean, I, I, I've, I've done projects myself. We take total expenses and we divide it amongst the units? Are you telling me that you didn't do it? This wasn't, this wasn't part of, a spread out, throughout all the units?
If it was, it would have been spread out as it was, I mean, as it was built post-phase one, though you can amateurize it over 192 units, it would have not been in, at that time, would not, you know, been included in the phase one calculation. It would have been included in the, in the, in the calculations of amateurizing it in the periods that we built it, in the two and three.
I'm not sure I quite understand that.
Me, that you can, yes, you can, if, let's, let's just, you know, if there was 192 condominiums and you do have this expense of the clubhouse, you can divide it by 192. it by a hundred and ninety-two and say, this is how much it costs per unit, yeah, per unit, but since the clubhouse expense was after phase one, the, in budgets and profit, real profit and loss, not just the specific report, we would have not said, hey, let's throw it back there, let's, you know, let's, hey, we made technically more money because we actually divide, we actually gonna add it to what we made in the first phase, it's just, this was, each phase had its own profit and loss. I don't know if I can clarify the end.
Yeah, I'm not sure I understand the question, even if you did, even if you divided the seven hundred and fifty-two thousand dollar investment by a hundred and ninety-two units, you're still higher than the per unit cost of the town's assessed park fee. It's not like they're trying to beat down by being cheap and saying, you know, oh, I'll do seven hundred dollars for you, it still is almost thirty-three percent higher.
Well, also, in the normal course of business, there are expenses, there's fixed, there's unseen expenses, you know, it, you know, I don't know, it doesn't, a lot of this doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
Yeah, I mean, I think characterizing as a profit and loss statement is probably a mistake, it really is not a profit and loss, it's more of a project accounting document. That's why I wanted to have Mr. Havacy here to testify as to, again, an archived twenty-year-old copy of QuickBooks, to give the project actual costs under oath, or at least, you know, in the presentation today, of what the actual costs were of the clubhouse, the grounds around the clubhouse, the recreational amenities, the horseshoes, the bocce, et cetera, and the swimming pool cost.
Well, I see two dates on this profit and loss statement, I see five, three, twenty-one accrual basis, I see somebody printing this at one-thirty in the morning, one-thirty-five in the morning, I mean, that, I don't know whether that means anything, but-
Somebody stayed up late that day.
Again, these are un-audited, you know, no matter what.
Yeah, I think also to aid, aid the board, and Mr. Eisler can also certify this afterwards, the accountings were recited multiple times in the argument in the papers. So they will be in multiple affidavits mentioned throughout the course of this twenty-year litigation as to what the actual recreational costs were, but for the, that's why for the convenience of the board today and the purposes of this hearing, I wanted to put Mr. Havacy on as a fact witness to the costs, and then, of course, if this needs to go to litigation afterwards, we'll be able to, Mr. Eisler and I will be able to rely upon the affidavits that were submitted under oath over the two decades of this.
All right, Ed, you had a question?
Yeah, I just want to make a quick point, there was some talk about, do we have enough or do we not have enough recreational land? That's a good debate, it's probably fifty-fifty on each side, but what can't be debated is the need for recreational fee money to maintain what we do have, even if it's not expanded, it's still a huge yearly expense for the town to maintain their properties.
Any other comments that you would like to enter into the record today, Mr. Egan?
No, thank you, thank you all very much for your attention.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make one statement just to, for the record, to clarify something that Mr. Egan said, I believe he said it was disingenuous for us to raise the estoppel argument at this late time, and in fact, that argument was raised in court papers in at least two thousand and six.
Okay.
So that's the only thing I want the record to show.
All right, thank you. So we are not gonna make any decisions today, but we can close the public hearing if no one else wishes to be heard, maybe I'll just ask if does anyone from the public that wants to comment on this public hearing? Is there anyone left on the call that wants to comment or ask a question? Is nobody else on?
Okay.
Okay.
I hope we close the public hearing.
All right, we've got a motion made and seconded to close the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Public hearing is closed. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so now we are up to resolutions, anyone from the public wish to comment on the resolutions? Anyone from the public? I don't see anyone else on. Okay.
I have a motion to remove resolution fifty-three, Henry Silverman minus subdivision, under any extension, so moved.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve resolution fifty-three to grant an extension for Henry Silverman minus subdivision, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Resolution is approved.
I'll move resolution fifty-four for Finks Country Farm Trail to Stand, granting approval for a farm stand application, to approve and place an eight-foot, thirty-foot portable trail at Sunken Pond.
This is actually gonna be the approval, Greg?
Correct.
Okay, we did ask you for some, to look up the limitations on that one code, right? Could you get back to us on it anyway? It's not gonna make a difference on our approval.
Yes, I'll do that.
Thank you. So motion made and seconded to approve resolution fifty-four for Finks Country Farm Stand, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Resolution is approved.
I'll move fifty-five, which classifies the site plan of Banning Hollow Farms as a type-one action, and we circulate lead agency requests.
With, with the covenants in place that we-
Yeah, this is only for the SECR?
Correct.
Right.
Correct, yeah.
He's gonna put it back to us before we-
Okay.
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded to approve resolution fifty-five, Banning Hollow Farm Vineyards, type-one action, SECR, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Resolution is approved.
Move resolution fifty-six, EP Equity Four Holdings LLC, lead agency for twenty-one, so moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve resolution fifty-six for EP Equity Four Holdings for lead agency status, negative deck, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Resolution is approved.
I'll move resolution fifty-seven for Rock Camp minus subdivision, two lot minus subdivision, so moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve resolution fifty-seven, Rock Camp minus subdivision, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
I do fifty-eight, Satow Residence, chapter two nineteen, granting approval for a application, stall forty-nine square foot hot tub.
Second.
Okay, if I could, we did not have any opposed to fifty-seven, correct? Okay.
Correct.
So motion made and seconded to approve resolution fifty-eight, Satow Residence, chapter two nineteen, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Resolution is approved. Any public comments? Any public comments? Anyone still on? Okay, meeting minutes of May sixth?
June, June sixth.
May sixth?
Of May sixth.
Oh, meetings, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
We had a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the minutes of May sixth, twenty twenty-one, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Minutes are approved. Any other business for the planning board?
I just hope this resident, this gentleman, I hope they don't turn more than four Kermit pushes, I see only a lot of three of Kermit pushes.
All right, next meeting date is Thursday, June third, seven P M, twenty twenty-one. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Second.
Thank you, have a good night, thank you.